Good evening. It is Monday, February 12th, 2024, in the Susan Tully Lives Lady Wardroom of the 1887 Building. I would like to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Mr. Time-Lock, will you take roll call place?
Mr. Andre here. Mr. Gayheart here. Mr. Gatton here. Mrs. Ingersoll here. Mrs. Costin here. Mrs. Reckles here. Mr. Scarrow here. Mr. Barkis and Mr. Poster are excused.
Okay, this meeting has been noticed per state statutes, and we do have a couple of people who would like to speak to us. I know that you have both know the protocol, so I'm gonna forego the reading of the community participation portion. First one up is Mr. Perkins, and you have thirty minutes.
Sweet, thirty minutes? Careful, they used to give three-hour presentations on sleeps. Hey, Mr. Perkins. If you're at home listening with kids around, I might be saying some things that you might not want them hearing, so please feel free to put it on mute or have the kids walk away. I say that because, you know, there's just so much going on in the world that we're in. And I know that last week, there was a stuff going on with DPI. And they had people coming in, getting feedback from people, and there was a superintendent. It wasn't you, Jason, so not quoting anything from him, but the superintendent said one of the threats was parents and the books. And, you know, it's just one of those things, and I come from a background where my mom was an English teacher ESL for thirty-five years at Willing High School in Illinois. My dad was a tax attorney. I was the youngest in my family, so by the time fifth grade rolled around, I had seen Friday the 13th Nightmare on Elm Street, as well as Comedy Central and stuff like that. So it is definitely very interesting in between my years. And I have seen some things at a very young age that really is dear to me with the kids in these schools today. And I know that there are, there's just certain things that you cannot unsee when you see something. And there are certain things that when you read, you cannot unread it as well. I once saw a movie where these painters went to help a movie out on the side of the road. That person was dressed up as Santa Claus. Santa Claus killed the dad, assaulted the mom, and then killed her. That kid later turned into having some psychological issues, obviously. But it is something that, you know, when you look at how a kid's brain develops, and that for a lot of us, it's not truly developed until twenty-five, for guys, it's sometimes even later. But it's one of those things where when looking at the books in schools, you know, some of the questions I have is, one, why do certain people want some of these books in the schools? How does that actually relate to anything on a learning scale? And I question some of the motives, and, you know, listening to the policy.
Thirty seconds.
Listening to the policy meeting this morning, there was one that was brought up. And I am not going to read the quotes on the book, but this is from the book review. Because I doubt anybody actually to page nine hundred and fifty-six to actually review this part. Because I know most of the people I talk to, if they got page two, that started a drinking problem. So, thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it. And let's think of our kids rather than our own desires.
Next up is Ellen Hawley.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Hawley, Towner Sugar Creek. I was at the district policy meeting earlier and wanted to extend a personal appreciation to Mr. Andre, Mrs. Ingersoll, and to, yes, Mr. Scarrow. And as well as the other people who were there for being very thorough and being very thoughtful about when we make a policy, does it apply to everyone, or is it a weak policy with holes in it that causes problems, which is what happened earlier? I just appreciated, you know, we talked about pornography, but then made it very clear that pornography is very different than sexual abuse. Other things that harm kids in books are homophobia, racism, misogyny, and hate speech. So I think that, you know, what was discussed earlier, even though we did specially look at that one area, that it certainly would apply to all of them, and I appreciate the time as someone who's worked with curriculum and written policy for different organizations for decades. It's very nuanced. It's very hard. And you think you got it, and you've got everybody really, okay, five eyes have looked at this, and we got it, we got it, we got it. And then you print it out, like, oh, this one little thing, and it's hard. It's hard. So thank you for the effort. As I say, I've been coming to meetings when I'm in town, and it's a lot of work, but I think it's something that benefits all of the families and students and staff members of the Elkhorn District. So thank you for your time for doing that.
Thank you. Next up is a Westside Elementary student presentation.
Hello, and I'm Amy Cruz, kindergarten teacher at Westside.
Melissa DeFazio, music teacher at Westside.
Ben McDislaw, principal at Westside. I will let them do all the talking about this advent-dang group. They've really taken the brains on this kind of program that's been growing and just was started here at Westside out this year.
Yeah, our goal was to bring our entire school together, get all of our kids to kind of know each other, take ownership in the building, help each other out in the hallway. So we took all of the kids and divided them up into groups with mixed grade levels. So like, my group might have two first graders, two second graders, two third graders, and they can have kindergartners as well. But we ended up with twenty-five different groups. So they're not big. It's fifteen to sixteen kids right now per group. And the kids get to come once a month. As you can see, we alternated days. We alternated times so that nobody was every time losing their recess or losing music every single time. And we altered, you know, days as well so that no one thought they were getting chipped in the day. But our primary goal was to get the kids to mingle within the building, and it has been phenomenal. I mean, these kids now see the older kids in the hallway or the younger, and they say hi to each other. Kids who didn't know each other before, going into lunch, now have a little bit more ownership, and they even know the teachers. They see more teachers, so therefore taking off the anxiety when they move up another grade as to, I don't know who that is, and it's really scary. We're just trying to get rid of some of that anxiety, and we just did another one this past week. And I even took it one more step because I had seen my kindergartners get really anxious. They get super excited for Dennis on our tailender, but they also get a little anxious because the ones who have to go down the three, five hallway don't know where the classrooms are. You know, I can say, it's down, remember when we go to gym, it's on the way? And they've got the number, but they don't remember what the G2 looks like. They don't remember exactly which door. So I paired them up with first graders this time, and they could walk down together. And even some of the first graders don't know, but at least they're walking together now. And we've kind of taken some of that stress away and making another bond yet. So our goal was just to create this family so that kids will take care of each other in the hallway. And hopefully, then that also goes out to our community that will continue to take care of each other.
And something, why I also tell you is they'll stay with their same teacher throughout the years. So when fifth grade leaves, kindergarten moves up, we get new kindergartners in. So they still build that relationship over the years as well. So that would be really cool to watch because we're just starting it. So it's a lot of fun. In October, we also tie all this into avid strategies. We try to bring it back to something that they are all used to seeing and hearing about in classrooms. So every month, we have a slide. We give it to the teachers. We've done all the work for the teachers. As far as here's what you're gonna do, open the slide, have fun with the kids. And so this is an example slide where this was October. The avid strategy was collaboration, getting them organized. Organized as in, like, just get them to their classroom. And we did get a little bit of get-to-know-you-with-a-Would-you-rather game, which is an avid strategy where they get to pick, would you rather, if you were able to, would you rather be a cat or would you rather be a dog? Would you rather go swimming in a pool or on a beach? So they can then see who's interested in what. Go to the next slide, please.
And also, when we came up with all these activities, our goal was to do it basically on a zero budget.
Yeah.
You know, if something that they could do that wasn't costing us time, funding, and time and cost of materials.
So this is the kids playing Would You Rather. They all had slides. The teachers could pick and choose. The kids could pick and choose what they want to do. So you can see how they're either sitting or they're standing. You know, they get to do a lot in these groups. It's only thirty minutes, but it goes by really fast, and the kids always complain, we're done. Aw.
And I was subbing during this day, filling in for a kindergarten class. It was kind of funny. You already, and you already know this, right, with the young kid, but if a fifth grader, say, swims at a beach, right? And they, you know, the little kid would kind of look up to them and like that. Like, oh, why'd you pick? Why'd you sort of pick up swimming at the beach? We're quiet, and then, you know, the older kid would be like, oh, because you can build sandcastles. I like to play in the waves. And like, yeah, that's it. It was a lot of fun to see that, and this was our very first one, what, four weeks maybe into school.
Right.
Just to see how they look up to them already.
Yep. So in November, we focused on gratitude, team building. Again, collaboration organization was the avid strategy. We did a read aloud. We played a game called Pass the Frog where they had to pass the frog using like different things other than their hands. So they had to get real close and personal, and they had a ball with it, and they got really far. And then even the teachers were like, wow, I never played that game. That was so much fun. All right, so then we have some pictures of the kids. You could see them. Some of them use a monkey. Teachers grabbed whatever they found in their classroom. Everybody pretty much got some sort of stuffed animal in their classroom. I mean, who doesn't, right? So they had a fun time. And then December, we had a school sing-along for Christmas carols. I led, the whole school came in. We had some songs. We sang along. We have some really good Mariah Carries in our school.
It was incredible.
And they had a blast, and they thought it was so much fun. They sat with their dens, and they got to sing with older kids. The younger kids sing with the older kids, and so the divas came out in all grades. So this is our sing-along, and I think, I'm hoping it will become a tradition that we'll do every year. And then this was our recent one, writing, reading, creativity. We made some Valentine's Day cards for the community, and some of the kids, we just told them, we're making them for the community. So some community kids made them for, well, one was for Friends on the Square, so we're gonna deliver our card to Friends on the Square. Some of them made them for EMTs and the police station, you know, and others just made a generic card that they just knew somebody would appreciate, and that's what we want to share with you tonight. So we have one more, I think, slide. Nope, two more. So that was them making their Valentine's cards. Again, we gave them, teachers just a cut piece of paper and said, have fun. So we did have a survey. I went, not a survey. We asked the fifth graders. We sent a Google form and said, what do you guys like most about this den? And these are their words. I didn't do anything but maybe capitalize and put a period on. So a couple of their quotes, I liked when we talked about kindness and I mentor the kids and take them to class. I like being in the same classroom with different grades, the way we get to collaborate with kids from different grades. So there's a theme going on. They really like that mixing. I think I have one more. This was my favorite. The thing I like most about Den is that I get to meet new people, and I have a lot of fun being with different teachers and students. And then I like to get to meet and see new or more people outside of my classroom. So the impact is there, and we're.
I'm gonna add, yeah, well, we, so we do check-in, check-out. PBI asks the students to start, right? They have a student that comes in, checks in with me in the morning, kind of pep them up, and then he checks out with me at the end. And not just for him, but for a few other students with the same people who they have now met with, like, you look for a reward, right? Hey, you get so many days together. What would you like to do? What would you like for your incentive? I have three students that have asked to like, hey, can I go to Miss Cruz's class and kind of like tutor in there or mentor some of the kids? So we have one student going down in first grade. We have another student going down in second grade. And these are the teachers that they're paired up with in Den. So you can already see how that kind of has an effect further than just the Den.
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
So how did you guys come up with this idea?
Actually, our administrators gave us the.
We, so Westside had Den prior to me being there. This is my fifth year at Westside. So they've had a Den group. I think they did it a little differently. I think it was just a classroom paired with a classroom.
Okay.
I can't speak in detail about it. When I left Jackson, we had like the KFC group. We called it Kid Friendship Group. And, or Kid Friendship Club thing. And we had that multi-age thing and kind of carried it on, so we just kind of transferred it over. And these guys really did a dudgy awesome.
Well, I love it. It's so, yeah, it really sounds like it's really working well. Yeah, great job.
I love that multi-age dynamic and giving the kids the opportunity because depending on, you know, their family they come from, like, JJ means the youngest, and I think he never gets the opportunity to be here or be a leader somewhere younger. Yeah, so I guess they really enjoy the opportunities.
And as they grow, they'll get to grow as that role.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
My kids still know their reading buddies from Westside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, next is the overnight travel request from the baseball team.
Yes, so Mr. Story wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately, they have the spring sports meeting. So he sent me the details on the trip.
Yep.
I think with the transition of Mr. Anzal and Mr. Story last year, usually this gets picked up right away at the first part of the year. But it's the same trip that they do each spring to.
I'm sure Mr. Anzal could answer any questions we have.
I would try. The details are in there. It is often a trip that there's no shortage of chevrons. There's a large percentage of the parents and families that attend and go along for the trip. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Same event, same venue. It's run smoothly. They did look originally at looking at doing vans instead of the coach bus just to try to get some savings, but we didn't want them on the driving and free vans on the road or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and really, savings won't be that great.
Yeah.
As opposed to just having a coach bus, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there any questions on the field trip? They didn't need the approval. It is over that spring break week as well.
It looks like they're just taking, is it varsity and JV or just?
Varsity and JV.
Oh, they are taking big JV, okay.
Yeah, I believe the, you had a six double game. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Now, well, what they, he did indicate that, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Returning varsity players, juniors moving to varsity, and any other players that played on varsity. And some of the players, they're taking larger groups. Some may be assigned to JV.
To JV one, yeah.
I think it's that.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's just varsity players, which I think in the past, haven't they taken some JV or no?
There was a few, yeah, JV players were taken.
Yeah. But I kind of like it that it's reserved for the varsity because I think it makes it a little more special and something to look forward to. And it's passed to the students' parents and fundraising, correct?
Correct.
It's really, I had, my son was on the very first trip that they ever did like this, and it's an amazing trip.
Yeah, they get a jump on our weather isn't great during that time.
Yep.
They get to play teams from around the country, different places.
They're pretty competitive play, yeah. Okay, so looking for a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve the overnight travel request from the baseball team as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the overnight travel request from the baseball team. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A post? Okay, motion passes. All right, next is the Exhale Market presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Senta Holmes and I'm a community resilience outreach coordinator here for the Elkhorn Area School District. So I want to ask you folks a question. Do you folks get stressed? Yes, yeah. How do you relieve that stress?
I go see my massage therapist.
Any other thoughts I'd like to share?
Lately, food has been a good.
Comfort food. I like hiking in the woods, but we only know what we know, right? So it got me to thinking about how do we give our community an opportunity to learn other ways to relieve their stress? And that's where the Exhale Market derived from. So what this is, on March ninth, between nine AM and one PM, we have community members from all of Walworth County either donating their time or in expense for their materials come and share their expertise with other folks on how what they like and what relieves stress for them. So actually, Julia, we have a massage therapist coming in. We have a facial person coming in, someone that talks about oils. We actually have a nutritionist coming in. We have Lakeland Animal Shelter coming with animals to do one-on-one with us. I am working with the University of Whitewater that is doing a grant fund with me. So this is zero cost to the school district, and it's building those relationships between artisans and the community as well as allowing the community to observe what is good for them. So I wanted you folks to be aware, and I'm welcoming you folks to come in. Everything is free. And we start, I've been getting a lot of people now calling saying, is there room for me? We have about fifteen artisans coming on. We have an urban line dancing, somebody that teaches yoga. And it's not structured. So somebody could come in. There's a group of five. They'll work with those five. And then the artisans will say, come back in ten minutes or we have more room for you. So nobody gets turned away. Everything is collaborative, and I hope to see you folks there. It actually have an updated flyer that goes to the Facebook event page. So we'll be doing some community polls on what folks would like to see and hopefully get those artisans to come as well.
Senta, where at at the high schools, I hope they.
So we, it is all over, and we actually thank you for sharing that. The Hope Squad members are volunteering their time to help the community members get the locations on where they want to, what events. But mostly, it is in the cafeteria. We have the glass room. We do have the library, suki gem for the folks maybe online dancing. So it's all kind of right in the front, and the artisans that are hidden, so to speak, we have volunteers to help get them to where they need to go. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the school board minutes on the regular and closed session board meeting on January twenty-second. You all received your minutes in your closed session minutes. I believe we can, do we have anybody who was online last time? I think we can do this together. So looking for a motion to approve. Before we do that, there was one thing, now that I'm thinking about it, on the minutes that I just wanted to ask about. Sorry, one minute. The Contract for Policy Services with Neola. It stated that the initial cost would be sixteen thousand four hundred and the annual renewal fee is five thousand. We did choose the option to pay that sixteen thousand four hundred over six-year period, I believe, right?
Or is it six installments?
Six installments, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we need to make that designation correction because we aren't outlaying sixteen thousand four hundred.
They are.
Modify it. We could modify so Jody could add to the official minutes that initial cost will be to be paid over six installments.
Yeah, just something to that effect.
Was that it, Jody?
That was it for me, yeah.
That I moved to approve the minutes of the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four closed session. Don't disclose that, I apologize.
Oh, all right, you can do.
Regular and closed session school board meetings as, it don't have to be separated.
Now it has to be separated.
Yeah, because we modified it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can start over, sorry.
I moved to approve the minutes of January twenty, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, regular school board meeting as modified. A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four's regular school board meeting as modified. Can we do this all in favor or does that need to be?
No, you can have it not.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A post? Okay, and looking for a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
Moved to approve the minutes of the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four closed session school board meeting as presented.
Second. It's been moved to, moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four closed session school board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A post? Motion passes, send them. General and other fund bills.
The general other fund bills this evening covers check number one five one two eight one through one five one four seven eight, wire transfer six fifty-eight through six six eight, ACH numbers five oh nine through five sixty-nine, a combined amount of one million five hundred forty-eight thousand nineteen dollars ninety-two cents. And then there was a memo I think came out today that gives some additional detail. It was a large list of bills this time.
Yeah. Quite a few. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bruin? Seeing none, then looking for a motion to approve.
I moved to approve the general other fund bills of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one five one two eight one to one five one four seven eight, wire numbers six five eight to six six eight, and ACH numbers five oh nine to five sixty-nine, and a combined amount of one million five hundred forty-eight thousand nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents as presented.
There a second?
All second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one five one two eight one to one five one four seven eight, wire numbers six five eight to six six eight, and ACH numbers five zero nine to five six nine, and a combined amount of one million five hundred forty-eight thousand nineteen dollars ninety-two cents. Roll call opens.
Mr. Andre?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costin?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, the next item is the sale of unneeded school equipment.
This evening, the school board is being asked to consider the actual sale of unneeded school equipment. It doesn't happen very often, but this kind of, a couple of different things came up at the same time. The first one was in our food service department. We have a couple of different units, a couple of different mixers, and a dough machine that's been at the high school for at least maybe thirty years that used to be used back in the day when they did a lot of baking. They haven't done baking for a long time. So actually, Drake, as our food service intern supervisor, reached out to local bakeries to see if there was some interest. And, and there was, at least from one of the local bakeries. So, yep, Baker Meister provided some quotes, and what they came over and looked at it. And they would like to provide a price and use that equipment, I assume, at their local bakery.
Yeah.
So that's the first item. The second one is from our tech. So that's the first item. The second one, um, is from our tech department. And they're looking at selling two, uh, Bridgeport mills. That they currently have in the metal shop and then a lathe as well. And they're looking at selling that and then eventually, uh, purchasing a CNC machine. So that they have more of that kind of equipment. I talked to Mike Thomas today and he mentioned even with the sale, they would still have four Bridgeports and I think three lathes in the high school. And it's really just to update the equipment based on current industry standards.
Currently, we have two CNC machines, so that would give them three CNC, more, more balanced. Approach, the CNC are the computer-controlled. Uh, machines, the lathe and the Bridgeports, those are more manual that they start out. In order to have room.
Yeah.
It's, he designed the layout, it's, it's in there, you couldn't get him a piece of equipment. So.
Right.
This would allow them to add another CNC.
Okay. So with the sale of these, so like for the. The mixer and the dough machine, the, the funds from that would go back into that.
The food service.
Food service.
Correct.
Budget.
Correct.
And same thing with the metals shop.
Correct.
Go back into their budget. Okay.
Yep. And, and with the, the tech equipment. Well, uh, we reached out to Precision Plus and they provided at least some market pricing on what that might look like.
Okay.
But, uh, after talking with some of the tech head leadership, including, uh. Chris Trotter, he's reached out to the Wisconsin Manufacturer and Commerce and they have a website. So we're gonna post this on there. Look at, uh, Facebook Marketplace and, and then I think we have at least one local business that might be interested.
Okay.
As well.
Great, great. Any other questions?
I, I would just add as part of like acquiring that additional CNC machine. When we have students that graduate, having completed professional certification, they're eligible, though it's called the act fifty-nine dollars. And it said it's intended to be around a thousand students, but. There, it gets pruned down based on, cuz they set a certain dollar amount and that gets divided by students. So that money gets reinvested back into our CTP programs for equipment maintenance repair. Changing that out, so.
I'm pretty sure we've mentioned it, but I just wanna make sure that it is mentioned. We do reach out to other people. See if they'd be willing to purchase these. I mean, I can, I can see that it's down there, but I just wanna make sure that I just mentioned that.
Okay.
Uh, just in case.
But then they'll be placed in a public location that anyone, if they want to go in and put a price on it, they can go.
Alright, looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the sale of unneeded school equipment items as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of unneeded school equipment items. All in favor say aye. A post. Motion passes. Alright, since we do not have student representatives tonight. I'm going to, even we don't have a report. Okay. Then, uh, we'll move to the director's report, Mr. Anzalone.
Hello. John Anzalone, thanks Jason, community engagement coordinator and. It was nice to see Westside here, seeing that I'm a Westside alumni, I'm not Elkhorn alumni, but Westside, that was not my principal. Uh, could you back up just one day, say thank yous? Yeah, thanks for your time. I just wanted to go off of this to start and give a quick update on the fitness center. It gets a lot of use during the community time, five thirty to eight thirty. And there's also the added benefit that's come about as we've gone, where more kids have taken advantage of it. Where they can't get to the weight room after school, they have this five thirty, eight thirty window, so. Kind of a, a great opportunity that I didn't initially think we would see a lot of kids or a lot of eighth graders, but we do. Um, and that's turned out kind of nice and they mix well with the adults, they really never had any problems, so. Alright, not as long as they're in the league. Well, right, next slide. This was the entrance to our, our track and football stadium. And I think you remember, I probably mentioned, we were doing that legacy art for Dean Wilson and Paul Yankee. And so that's what we started with, and if you go to the next slide. This is what we finished with. And I think it turned out pretty nice and the coaches and staff and teachers and everybody seemed to be pretty happy with it. Um, the plaques just went up a couple of weeks ago. And the neat thing is it was all through community donations and the donations of materials. And the manufacturing by RC welding, which was huge. Cuz it was probably a nine thousand dollar proposition.
Just gonna say, but it was close to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah. Really neat that they did that and I think it turned out great. And then next. Um, so this is the space between the auditorium doors at the high school. Um, it's been kind of a no man's land space, like sometimes kids sit there, sometimes they don't wanna sit there. Um, and it's kind of, it holds our, our elk and, and that's about it right now. So. I, I know we touched on this a little bit too, that we're looking at this wall of honor and recognizing those who are in the military, whether they're community members. Alumni, staff, whoever that might be. And working with Debenhams Builder and the Surgi Foundation. If you'd like to flip. This is the rendering, although the wall of fame should be a wall of honor, but. Um, that's fine, but this is what the rendering of that was, of what that space would look like. Um, upon completion, other than. On that countertop would be a touchscreen where you could search branch, your, um, serve, you know, uh. Here serve things like that. And I think it turned out pretty nice. The placards for the military branches would be created by the kids in our maker space. So they'd be put on acrylic and then covered with like that wrap. And then the elk that's on there in the rendering isn't accurate, it would look like the elk. The one we have there now won't be moved, so we're not going back to the meal there. And then, uh, the Surgi Foundation logo, they had asked for. The donation of completing the whole thing, um, if their logo could be displayed as well. And it would be much lighter than this, the woodwork is much lighter. The dimness of the rendering is to show that where the lights would be. Shining down onto and what they'd be focusing on. Any questions on that?
What's the Surgi Foundation?
The sur, Nicholas de Surgi Foundation is a foundation, um. That was created, Nicholas was their son. He had an all-natural beef farm out north of town on Highway A and. He was killed in a motorcycle or a dirt bike accident. And he loved the area, he loved the community, he was really involved. And so the family wanted to carry on his name and legacy through this foundation. Um, and they've been really generous to work with the school and, uh. They really like projects that incorporate the school, the community and kids. So, you know, like the Surgi Trail, like the youth build came out and did the bridges and stuff, so they really. They really like that it has a community use, a schooling use, and the kids are involved in the process. Yeah, and they've been wonderful to work with, so. Yeah, just a sneak peek on. I've talked, you know, everybody seems on board, Dan Keel, John Handle, the custodians, um. So yeah, we're slowly moving forward here and I'm hoping that. With any luck, maybe by early summer, but for sure by the start of next school year. And then this, this, the involvement of our, of our veterans and. You know, it used to be, I called the Legion or the BFW and said, would you like to do some games? Now they call me anticipating next season, saying, what do you got for us?
Yeah.
And I think that's kind of neat and they feel it's pretty special and they enjoy doing it. It just kind of goes along with that wall of honor.
We hear lots of compliments from our visiting.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, then I just wanted to share some of the things that are ongoing or coming up, our pound fitness badminton. Um, has come about in the last month and it seems to be a hot, hot thing on Sunday nights. Which I never would have thought of, but, uh, some people had approached me and said, what about? So, why not? And then the hands-only CPR, Aurora does that for no cost. And then obviously our lap swim that we've had for a while in the mornings. And our auto club community nights is another thing that. We did this thinking people in the community that maybe aren't schooled in autos and that would like to know how to, you know. Change a tire, wiper, balls, things like that. And it turns out that, um, our attendance is half. Community members and half students, where their parents are like, you're signing up for this, so you know how to get your fluids and all that stuff. And then the auto kids are advanced auto kids. Take the participants in groups and they teach.
Thanks.
So in the two sessions, Austin's there with them, but the kids are actually teaching these people and, uh. It's worked out really well. This is the second year we've done it and, uh, it's kind of making good interaction for the kids. And then these are some of the partnerships, um. The laser tags coming up, um, they always do, the rec department always does the daddy-daughter dance.
Yeah.
And as Carl and I were talking, it's like, why don't you ever do anything for the moms?
Yeah.
Maybe they need to get out of the house too, right? So, uh, yeah, we got coming up laser tag in the Julie Center. And obviously the Maker Fair is coming up on February seventeenth. Walk with the Doc, we've been doing for about a year and Aurora provides a doctor per Saturday of every month and. They have a health topic and then people help them after that, you can walk and ask questions. No diagnosis, but you can ask questions. And then the Lions, uh, pancake breakfast is coming up. And, uh. Again, another great partnership with the civic groups and they're so kind to us as well. And then Farmhouse Suites is, uh, cookie decorating. And because they've done so well, that they've, they've added two more dates and dates their kids cookie decorating class, so. And the first one, they got about twenty-five kids that came along to learn how to decorate cookies. So kind of unique, kind of different. And, uh, yeah, it's evolved as times, as time has gone on. Yeah, I, we could move. It's truly not all. I just wanted to mention. I know we talked about a while back about the, um, Lakes Area Community Engagement Professionals Group that derives. And came from Elkhorn and there was four of us, four schools that started it. And currently, we've been at it for a little over a year and there are fourteen schools now. So all those schools have said, hey, you got this group, hey, this is what we're doing, or I just started at this school, or. Gosh, I love someone to collaborate with, so it's been kind of neat to see that group grow in such a short amount of time. And, uh, all the good and, and communication that comes out of that.
Yeah.
So, and then I want to let you know that April thirteenth is our great give back, where our students go out. Um, and we have taken to different places around the community to get stuff done for nonprofit agencies.
That's awesome.
So we're gonna do it again and the Surgis are sponsoring all the shirts for that as well and they usually come. And, uh, get their hands dirty and pitch and they go out with the students. As well as kind of tell their story and why they, why giving back is so important.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. I went back to this slide cuz as part of my announcements, I was gonna mention the Maker Fair on Saturday. Um, strongly encourage.
Yeah.
Around, but it's the second largest Maker Fair in the state. Right here on the site and it's amazing. Part of why I like it so much is. It's not overly crowded, but I wish it was more crowded cuz there's so many new things that are different activities for the kids and.
Yeah.
Stuff that are doing from cardboard boat races to. There's a lot going on, it's really. As Rebecca, um, Blom and Erica Card, brought in.
Yeah. They do an amazing job with it, yeah. Okay, uh, doctors, or, excuse me, uh, January enrollment report.
Uh, Bill, you want me to take this one or do you wanna?
Give this summarized of. We do two official counts each year. The DPI requires to do that September and then January. So what we're sharing with you tonight is the January numbers and if you compare the totals, you'll see we're up about sixty-one students from. September to January overall.
Yeah.
So that would be our head count. The September count is the one that's used, um, most significantly in our revenue cap calculation and our state aids. But the January is averaged in for our equalization, so it's still important too. And it gives us maybe a sense of trends in terms of enrollment as we start planning for next year, so.
Isn't it pretty typical that we are always higher enrollment in January than we are at the beginning of the year? What is that? Not always the case?
Not always. In fact, sometimes it's, it's down because we'll have some high school kids that maybe graduating.
Oh, sure.
Out, so. But I think if you look at like the CCA program.
Well, and options. Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All are growing.
Yeah, even all three of our elementary schools, when you look down at the, um.
Yep.
Bottom, you know, the personal website went from three ninety to three ninety-two. Tivitz went up ten students. And Jackson went up seven students. I would say that's not necessarily. Typical to have all three go up. You'll see the middle school drop about four students, the high school about six. And then.
It's pretty common to have the high school drop though, for the reason that you stated.
Yep, then this is CCA, the current college academy. One ninety-four to nineteen and then. This one is SOPUS, which is. Uh, up three students, it's a small program we have and then. Here, this is options. And both CCA and options, the nature of their flow and, you know, number of enrollment, they do. Tend to go each year, they turn over.
Yeah.
If you look at it by grade wise, I think we only had one grade that went down. One, and that was only because. One person was bumped up a grade, so. Otherwise, every, every grade has gone up.
Okay. Something we need to do with that, right?
No.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, first reading of the modifications to the employee handbook.
The personnel committee met and went through recommended modifications. The additions are in blue and then strike throughs are shippin' through. And we've pulled those out of the entire handbook, so you can just focus on those areas. Included, we passed earlier in the year an email. Um, policies for incorporating that language and referencing that standardization. Into the employee handbook as well. And those guidelines. The payroll cycle based off of feedback from staff at the listening sessions. And, um, the district, we wanted to implement. The option for professional staff who are salaried to be able to receive their payments over a twenty-four.
Right.
Pay cycle rather than twenty-one. And in order to do so, because collect, when collective bargaining ended, it has to be each employee in that. Area will have to sign out, but they, how they want it. So we will have some that will do twenty-one possibly, but the overwhelming majority want to spread it out. So that language is in there. Breaks, this was recommended from the supervisor of primary that support staff aspect, wanting to make sure that. You know, you get the breaks, but we ask that you stay on site. Um, so they can be located if needed or, you know, report back in a timely fashion there. Attendance and reporting, uh, I believe Bill, maybe you could, this was, if I recall correctly, were it's a line of statutes, was that correct?
Statute and skyword.
Yeah.
They said that.
Yeah.
With our payroll social.
Right, and then supplemental pay. For our professional staff, we added in based on, again, the listening session and working with that. Advisory, the district advisory committee that I meet with. Um, was to add in the. Um, addition for any staff member who's staying after those contracted hours for IAP meetings that they can submit that via supplemental pay. Summer school and extended, uh, school year, you'll see. Uh, what they really wanted to look at is kind of streamlining that payroll and that recognition, so it's not a. A difference in the cost or the compensation, but it just, it. Makes it a lot simpler on that reporting and the streamline that process, not adding unnecessary bureaucracy to that. That's all related to that provision. If there's any questions, just stop. Um, added language in there to clarify the theme and for bus supervision, this varies different from each, uh, school. And so they wanted to add in there that, you know, what, this was reflective of the current practice, so. So that's the compensation for dollars per day we ask to give up prep time to assume those supervisory duties.
Jason, I have a question on that, um, not that specific portion, but do we have anything anywhere? Like, I know that there's a huge busing issue, like shortage specifically, uh, of drivers. Have we ever looked at incentive pays for staff members to be able to buzz? I don't know if it's even possible because they have, friends have to be there by, but.
Yeah, so we have made that offer in the, in the past and communicated that out that we would support teachers. One, going and getting their, their license and then it is a little, I don't want to say it's more complicated because they would have to be hired by Durham to do that. And if it fit in their schedule that we would release them to do that, we can even help with co-curricular events. I worked in smaller district, the teacher I drove bus. And they would release me to, I wasn't a normal route driver, although I did a lot of driving. And so I would, you know, they scheduled my prep at the end of the day, so I could go into afternoon routes and in the morning. You know, I would be done in time. There were some ruffled feathers because, well, Tedlock got out of the staff meeting because they were in the morning. And said, well, if you want to drive a bus, right? I had to go back and follow up to find out what was going on. So, and then I drove as a principal and it was a superintendent wheel. So it is something that is possible in there and we do have a high school teacher who's driving one of our vans. Uh, right now and transporting. It hasn't, haven't had the numbers of the level of interest that perhaps like that could help with that. Um, something we, we may need to look at down the road and partnering with Durham. You know, when my wife was first hired as a special education aide, again, the, the buses were owned and operated by the district. But right in her job description was, we'll be required to get your CDL to transport your students. So she actually drove her, you know, the bus and went and picked up the kids that had special transportation on the case. So no problem. So there are models where that's happening. We've extended that, but we don't have a lot of takers. And I don't believe we have a teacher right now currently that's filling in or driving like that. But it's certainly something we could explore to, you know, look at how do we incentivize or potentially. Do that more, yeah. Um, specific requirements for row adjustments. Uh, this was based off of feedback as well and the elimination of pro-growth points system. So it's reflecting that. I think we, both teachers and administrators will be relieved to see that program die natural there. And again, I think it was just one of those areas that was an unnecessary layer or a piece that we had added on, on there. That being said, we wanted the language in there as to reflective of what they do need to complete in order to advance some of these schedules. And then updating the extra duty, uh, compensation. Again, we align all of these to the hours of what's put in on those positions and align into what would be that hourly stipend rate and then shift them to salary as we go for that simplicity. So when you see the different amounts, it's not that we value one over the other. It's all based on how many times do they mean, how much time? Uh, this is recommendations related to the substitute teacher pay and the escalation based on the long-term. Hey, this is after ten consecutive days that they would ship. To give you an idea, a. Uh, teacher coming in on a base contract at the bottom of the salary schedule, I believe that's about two hundred and eighty dollars. Off the top of my head, it's about two hundred and eighty dollars a day, um. Uh, two forty-one is the bottom base schedule. So it's still, it's not quite at that base date, um, but it's a greater incentive than what was there before it shortens that time.
Can you go back for Mr. Callman right?
Uh, the call, this is for support staff, a similar type proposition. After ten consecutive days. Uh, summer school pay, um. It's just establishing that those that do the summer school shall be paid a step one of the hourly rate if they're an hour rate employee. Paying for extra duty jobs during the workday. Bus supervision again. And bless their heart, those that go out and do the bus supervision for four parts. Covers their lunch. And, you know, teachers are, I, I used to love to do lunchroom supervision because I got free lunch out of the keying teacher, you know. Add it up, I just grab my lunch and go, um.
Okay, well, this is the first reading, so if, um, anybody has, after you've reviewed this, if you have additional questions, please reach out to Mr. Tadlock or even Mr. Turin, um, ask questions. Otherwise, it'll come back to the next meeting for a second reading and approval. All right, moving on to the personnel recommendations.
All right, we have a number of personnel recommendations for you today. They're all listed here on the sheet. Want to thank Patty Hart, uh, for her service. She'll be retiring as a middle school cook after, uh, two years in the district. Kylie Hastings, Jessica Bevra, Annabelle Coakcroft and William Reese have submitted, uh, their resignations. Their last days are all indicated on there. So the transfer Elizabeth Ortiz, who will transfer from regular to special education position. Uh, the appointment of Ashley Drake from interim service supervisor to, um, full-time regular status supervisor, replacing Tori Castee. Purla Rosales is a Westside Teaching Assistant, Melissa Wilkie is a Westside Teaching Assistant. Susan Kriegen is a middle school teaching assistant. Uh, David Merrill is a high school special education teaching assistant. Uh, Bo Ash is an athletic coach and he's assistant track coach. Taylor Mayer is a high school track assistant coach. Gigan Stoneworth as a track assistant coach. Uh, Haley Crook is a middle school volleyball assistant coach and Chance Larson is a high school baseball.
The last two have resigned.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Looking for a motion to approve the recommendation sheet. I moved to approve the personal recommendation sheet in February twelfth, twenty twenty-four as presented. So moved in seconded to approve the personal recommendation sheet of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Um, all in favor, say aye. Post. Motion passes. All right, uh, school gifts.
All right, we have a number of school gifts to present this evening. Uh, well, one, but it's distributed in a number of different ways. Jersey Mike's of Dalvin, uh, had their grand opening as part of that grand opening fundraiser. They did a fundraiser for the school district where if we. They were there was given a coupon, if you made a three dollar donation to the school that the coupon was from, then you would get, uh, sub sandwich for free. And then those three dollars were distributed amongst the schools, the dollar amounts in total were two hundred dollars to CCA. Hundred and eighty-two dollars to Tivitz, hundred and twenty-eight dollars to Westside, hundred and seventy-nine dollars to Jackson, two hundred and ninety dollars to the middle school. And five hundred and twenty-one dollars to the high school. So that was a lot of sandwich. Yeah, they had a real narrow window.
It was like three days, but they were busy as we went and I'm assuming they were very busy.
Dalvin too?
Yes. Dalvin's actually went before ours. They have a three-day window for ours, yeah.
I wish I knew about it. All right, looking for a motion to accept.
I moved to accept the general school gift as presented.
Moved in second to accept the general school gift, uh, thank you Jersey Mike's. Uh, all in favor, say aye. All right, parking lot use requests.
Yep, at this point, the green are the ones that are, um, confirmed. Gray is the bid date, it's not confirmed, the white, the group is not confirmed yet. And I know, uh, the two Johns actively recruit to fill those. There's, the, the fair has added a lot of events, you know, since I've been here. So some of them, um, some of them have grown to where the parking has even utilized more so over here. I know the first year of RIT test, they have plenty of room just to park in. On, on site, but it's grown to such a large event that it has to utilize now. So each year, clubs and organizations put in requests to man the parking lots. And then they, the funds raised from the parking lots go to fund their programs or organizations. So if there's any questions on this, I know John's here, he'd probably answer those better than I can, but it's pretty well laid out.
John, what do they make-ish when they do these events?
Um, the parking lot on the north. North side of Jackson here is a pretty consistent one. You can make eight hundred to a thousand like at a flea market or. Yeah, because you'll turn it over several times. This side doesn't do as well. I mean, on a good day, at a flea market day, you might be a five hundred dollar day. The high school makes great money during the fair. The booster club makes this amount of money, twenty plus thousand.
Their biggest revenue source for the booster club.
We've even expanded over the years and since the development of Market Street and the maintenance building over there. Clubs and then even middle school clubs have been able to take advantage of that and make money from utilizing the parking lot by the softball fields. And then SOPHOS during the fair as well, so lots of opportunities that we're lucky to have.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the parking lot use requests as presented.
Moving seconded to approve the parking lot use requests as presented, all in favor, say aye. And post. All right, we, uh, then need an, um.
Well, I just said, I already talked about the Maker Fair this Friday. I want to thank everybody who organized the chili cook-off. We dodged the tornado warning by a few miles. And the event, uh, went really well. I don't know how, I know we had three solo judges here. I hope your stomachs are all good.
You said you didn't eat, did you get full?
I, I did not eat it, I did get full. I walked by Jason and said we should hazard pay for it. Greg Angersall did pretty good.
He did, for a first summary, I got seven nice.
Every year, I think, gee, we probably need to move this to a larger place. There's always so much soup compared to the number of people that are there. That I mean, you could probably have double, triple the people and still have some soup. It's amazing how many people in the community turn out and make their soups and chilis.
Greg only had just a little bit left in his pot. There was, most people ran out.
And the live auction portion of it was terrific. It was so great that they did a live auction.
And I love that it's just baked.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And, yeah, for the limited, that was, that was perfect. Right, it was just perfect.
All right, we do have a closed session item.